Thank you, Bob. Okay. Y'all ready? Okay. Do we have, uh, do we have the mayor?
Yes, sir. The mayor is here. He's just sitting down.
Morning, Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to call the Tyler City Council meeting for July the 8th to order, and we'll have Councilman McKeller give the invocation and the pledge. Thank you.
Would you pray with me, please? Our most kind and our gracious and our heavenly Father, we thank you so much for waking us up this morning and starting us on another day's journey. And Father, we come right now asking you to bless us, bless our council, bless our city, bless our mayor. And Father, we ask a special blessings upon the entire state of Texas and this nation. Father, you know what we need, and we know that we want to be removed from the pandemic that we're experiencing now, Father. And we pray that the things that we need to do, the leadership, that it will be pleasing and acceptable, and it will also be beneficial for the health of this country. Father, we ask for a special prayer for two of our former council members, the late Mr. Andrew Melontry. And Father, we also ask a special prayer for our dear friend, Councilman, former Councilman Ed Moore. Father, now, as we get into the business of this council, we pray that everything that we do will be pleasing and acceptable for the city and for this state. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We also have the opportunity for any citizens that would like to comment on any of the items on the agenda today can call in if they're not currently present here in the council chambers. So there'll be a slight pause before we take our vote so that we can allow for public input. So the first item on the agenda are the minutes. Need to review and approve the minutes for the May 27th, 2020 meeting. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman McGee, a second by Councilman Sellers. Any discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I did not hear your vote. Forgive me.
I did vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Davis Stixson. You're up. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Uh, this is a resolution request for your authorization, well, first of all, to ratify the submission of a grant application to the FAA. This grant amount was, is $2,350,000, and it's 100% funded through FAA. There's no local obligation for this, this grant. And then 10 of this grant, well, also, I guess, to get your consideration, ratifying our application and asking your authorization to accept it once it's submitted to us. I anticipate it being offered to us late this week or early next. And usually when they submit these offers, we need to turn them around very quickly with a, with an approval. So that's the reason for the resolution. What it really will direct that money to is we've been in a process to re, I guess, rework and upgrade our security system around the perimeter of that airport. Many of the gates, you know, that are electronic are up to 20 or 20 or more years old. Parts are becoming obsolete, but also to upgrade the access control where all of that access control around the perimeter of that airport can be controlled by the airport manager's office. So it really is a, you know, security's never really convenient, but it's, it's adding convenience, I guess, to an inconvenience situation where we can better control it and tenants have a better knowledge of, you know, who's going in and going out. And plus the surveillance. So that project is bid, is ready to award pending on a, you know, an offer and acceptance of this grant. So with that being said, we, we request your consideration, or one for the ratification of application, and then to accept the grant once it's offered.
Are there any questions of Davis?
Move to approve R1.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by McGee and a second by McKeller. Is there any further discussion? Do we have any calls? Okay, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. And council, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by, by nae. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Davis. Appreciate it. Now we're on to O1. Kedrick Trimble.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
You have item O1 before you. Request the City Council consider conducting an annual investment policy review and approval of ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 2, adopting the city's investment policy. Texas Government Code 2256 is a reference. City Tyler Code of Ordinance is Chapter 2, Article 5 of our investment policy. City Council is required to, by the Public Funds Investment Act, to review our annual, our policy on annual basis. And so this policy review will help us in achieving our certificate of distinction, distinction related to our investment policy that is awarded by the Government Treasurers Organization of Texas. Most of the items in, in the ordinance are cleanup items, changes of broker dealer names, minor wording changes. So you have a struck-up version of the ordinance for your review. And I'm just before you today recommending that you approve the attached ordinance.
Any questions, Kedrick? Okay, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, my like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Kedrick, thank you very much.
Do we have a motion?
We don't have a motion.
We don't. Got to have a motion.
Forgive me, I'm sorry. Got, boy, I was getting excited about that.
I move to approve 01.
Second. Thank you very much. So I've got a motion by Sellers and a second by McKeller. You know, I think I was in anticipation of a very short meeting, so forgive me for being so, uh, here. Okay. And Councilor, do we need to retake the vote? Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, my like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now I'm back on track. Thank you. All right. O2. Stephen? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Um, the ordinance being presented this morning relates to amendments to Chapter 8, City Parks. Most of these are of a cleanup nature, and we are removing some unnecessary wording as well. Uh, the, the main things that this ordinance does, it consolidates the responsibilities of the Parks Board into one city code section. It moves the purpose, definition, and master plan to the top of the ordinance. Uh, the Parks rules and regulations are removed, and that reference is being removed because these are governed by city ordinances and not rules. And lastly, the facility hours will remain from 8:00 a.m. You'll excuse me, I'm, uh, been a little sick this morning, so. Facility hours will remain from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m., but it's being changed to Saturdays. Uh, so this was reviewed by the Parks Board on June 22nd. The board recommended approval, and it's recommended that the City Council adopt the proposed ordinance as presented.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Any questions of Stephen? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by McKeller and a second by McGee. Mr. Mayor?
I vote yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Now we're into the miscellaneous M1. Ms. Felicia Herndon.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
On April 2nd, the City of Tyler Reinvestment Zone Committee reviewed the status of six current City of Tyler tax abatements as of December 31st, 2019. The committee found that the projects have created 278 jobs, retained 827 jobs. The companies have a combined employment of 1,147 and have invested over $55 million in new plant and equipment in Tyler. After review, the committee made recommendations as shown on this chart. Three companies were not in compliance with the tax abatement agreement. Crest Systems, who's required to have 65 employees at the end of December of last year, reported 56. The recommendation therefore is 86% tax abatement. Crest lost some sales volume due to depressed oil and gas markets, which that caused their numbers to be somewhat lower. SS McClure was 100% compliant. They're required to have 73 employees. They reported 101. Fresenius was required to have 300 employees and reported 283, which a 94% uh, abatement is recommended. Fresenius was required under their abatement agreement to have 300 employees at the end of 2018 in order to be eligible for abatement for '19 and '20. So those numbers are being used for this abatement review. And at that time, they were doing some in-house training, so therefore they froze employment for a little while, but they plan to get back on track with that. Highland Dairy, they were required to have 114 employees. They reported 98. They were 86% compliant. Uh, Highland's project was delayed early on in the process due some, due to some issues with engineering plans and land purchases, but they are also currently back on track and moving forward with that project. Hood Packaging, they were 100% compliant. They were required to have 144 employees. They reported 148. Trained for their new office facility, these numbers do not include plant employment. They were required to have 459 employees. They reported 469. They were 100% compliant. All of these companies, this includes investment, and the numbers are reported for employment. Uh, it is our recommendation that the City Council accept the review of the tax abatements as presented.
I do have a question, Felicia. How does EDC evaluate compliance with regard to COVID? I mean, it's created disruption in businesses everywhere.
Right.
Is there a factor that you give for this period of time?
The, the tax abatement agreement allows for some flexibility as long as progress is being made toward, um, meeting your numbers. Uh, so there, there is some consideration. Now, as far as the reporting for last year, those that were not in compliance, those were due to some business and economic, uh, um, issues. But going forward for the numbers this year, we expect that some may have some issues in terms of them meeting their employment goals due to COVID. And, um, the Smith County, when we do the review next year, not Smith County, but City of Tyler, we'll, we'll take that in consideration as we look at their numbers at that time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So the EDC board has seen these numbers and approved?
Yes. Yes.
I move to approve.
Okay.
M1.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Sellers, a second by McGee. Any further discussion? We'll call for the vote. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Felicia.
Thank you.
We're on to M2. Stephanie Franklin.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor. Virtually. Uh, this morning, I'm here to talk about the innovation pipeline. Um, this, as you all know and have been a part of and have been to the innovation pipeline, this was born really out of a mayor's initiative several years back. And the creation of the innovation pipeline was really to spur innovation in small business in the city of Tyler and offering opportunities for people as they develop their businesses. Um, really, the goal of the project was to be funded and owned and driven by the community. So there was a substantial amount of community involvement through this process as well as surveys and what the community wanted to see as part of this project. Over the years, we created the innovation pipeline. We opened it in 2017. We created a nonprofit board. That's a nine-member board that's currently participating in making, assisting in making decisions for that facility. We also worked with UT Tyler as part of a huge partnership to provide staffing for the facility as well as training and other areas of the facility. TJC has been a great partner. We've had numerous donations, community donations to help build and open the facility. So it has been really community-driven from the beginning. At this point, we're happy to say, over this three-year period since we did open in September of 2017 and recreated that nonprofit, we're able to now spin this off into the nonprofit so that they can continue to grow the membership and the facility as they see through this project. So, um, the other thing today that we're looking at and reviewing is not only this agreement, but also an agreement with FTA. We purchased the property, 150-year-old building, and restored it with some FTA funds because it does serve as a transit stop for our transit facility. So it has a dual combination role there. The other thing is that, um, after, after we complete this project, really that will allow the nonprofit board to continue any other partnerships, those that they see fit, including now in discussions with TJC and how they can further their relationship. So we're excited to present this today. I know that you have a copy of the agreement. There's several things in the agreement. Um, the, the biggest is that the city would provide monetary funding in the amount of $80,000 for the next three years. However, every year that would come back to the council so that you could receive a report on how the facility is doing. Are they working towards being self-sustaining? And, um, and you would make a motion and then vote on that each year before we move forward. I know that, um, Phil, Phil and I have been very close in this project as well as Craig Wheeler. Without their leadership in this project, this project would not be successful. And so I really appreciate that we're finally at this point that we can move it forward through their leadership and onto their leadership. So I just wanted to recognize that they're here and may want to say a few words as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions of Stephanie before we ask Phil or Craig to come to Mike?
Uh, what percentage of the building does Tyler Transit occupy versus the innovation?
Uh, it's just the very front of the facility where there's a sitting area before you come in. Because of the security access that we have to have for the building and the equipment, it's just that front area.
Okay. And there's no issue without growing it for Tyler Transit as they progress, or?
No. No, ma'am.
Well, it's the mayor's initiative, and it has gained momentum each year that, that it's been open. And so it's really exciting to see the community support that we've had. And then all of a sudden, here comes COVID, COVID, and kind of slows things down a bit. But I understand that we have a plan in place to continue to build membership even through this COVID and post-COVID time, so.
Correct.
Thank you, Stephanie. Phil, would you or Craig like to come up and address council? If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Phil Burks, 5800 Eaglesness Boulevard, Tyler, Texas. Uh, I want to thank the council and especially you, Mr. Mayor, for all your belief in innovation pipeline since the very beginning. As I put on this shirt this morning, which is our logo, I was thinking, a lot of us have worn logo shirts over the years, hundreds of them. I have as well. This is one logo I'm extremely proud of. It's an initiative by the city of Tyler to move innovation forward, to take that burgeoning mind that has an idea. Somebody asked me, what's the success of innovation pipeline? What's it look like? And I said, it's when the next Elon Musk stands up and says, I got my start at innovation pipeline. And I thank the city very much for standing behind us, especially through this, uh, this time. And as Stephanie said, we've been working on this for quite a long time, back and forth and back and forth. And we're very happy with the results of the agreement, and we're looking forward to future partnerships.
Wow. Thank you, Phil. Craig, would you care to make a comment? You'll state your name and address for the record.
My name's Craig Wheeler. Uh, 3404 Big Oak Drive. I've been a part of the innovation pipeline since it was conceived in a whole different idea and, but yet the objective was still the same. And that is to provide opportunity, tools, and equipment and training for folks that have an idea and move it into a tangible, physical product and/or service. We've had several of those sort of businesses grow out of the innovation pipeline right now. We don't advertise them because of privacy rules, but we've had some exciting developments. COVID has put a dent in our operations, but, um, you know, we have a full-time, we have two full-time staff now that we are funding, and, um, uh, they're quite excited and tied into the, to the goals of, uh, of the innovation pipeline and providing a place for people to grow their business. So if there is any questions, Phil or I would be happy to answer.
Just an observation I personally wanted to make is that I know a few young people, professionals that just simply utilize the space and, and have a membership so they have an office. But then when you get in that innovative atmosphere, it, it's amazing how they've expanded the, the role or the opportunities that they've taken by being in that facility. So anyhow, it's a great, great place. I'm excited for the future.
Well, the, the support of the city has been wonderful. It takes support like this to get one of these things started. If you look at across the country where these innovation pipelines or maker spaces exist, they tend to have something very large behind them, a university, um, a city, or a foundation, as in the case in Tulsa, Oklahoma. The, uh, uh, the ability for them to continue on has to do with the growth and what we can build out of it and, and, um, and other partnerships that we can create. TJC has just been wonderful in, in how they want to approach their partnership with us, and we're still in discussions, but I, I see that moving forward in a really progressive and positive way.
Thank you.
It's also great to have two leaders like you and Phil to move it forward because without leadership, it would not have been where it is today.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to tell you that prior to COVID, I was there every week at the pipeline. I enjoy that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. All right. Any further discussion? Questions to staff? Okay. And I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve M2. Second.
Got a motion by Sellers, a second by McKeller. We'll call for the vote. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we're on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled forward? Or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by McKeller and a second by McGee. Any further discussion? We'll call for the vote. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, my like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now we're on to the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. So for, uh, the primary thing I wanted to make mention of today is School is Cool. Uh, our seventh annual School is Cool event is scheduled for Thursday, August 6th at Harvey Hall and the Rose Garden Center. Uh, due to COVID-19, the event will be a drive-through backpack distribution, similar process used by the East Texas Food Bank this past few months. The event will be from 4:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and 2,000 school-supplied backpacks are expected to be given out. One of the big reasons I wanted to kind of talk about this is because with COVID-19, we are, the School is Cool group is not accepting anything as far as physically. So they need donations in order to be able to pull off the 2,000 backpacks for this year. Uh, their goal is $30,000 in order to be able to do that. And schooliscooltyler.com is where people should go to find out more information and the ability to assist. Again, that is schooliscooltyler.com for more information. Uh, also, just a few other things. Mentioned Harvey a second ago about the, uh, School is Cool event. Uh, but also with the final COVID-19 addendum and waiver has been distributed to all, to the whole Harvey Convention Center and Rose Garden Center clients. Uh, the addendum is a waiver that we are asking people to sign before any public event takes place and they enter into the facility for the event. So that provides as far as additional liability assistance for the city as well as for the people putting on the event themselves at Harvey and the Rose Garden Center. Um, our streets overlay projects begin today and continue through Saturday, August 1st throughout the city. Uh, roadway solutions will be seal coating and, uh, multiple roadways for the 2020 Seal Code Project. Uh, we can expect land, lane closures and road closures and traffic delays. Uh, we put out some social media on it yesterday. I advise anyone who's wanting to find out if their street is on the list, and if so, what week possibly it could be affected, to go to social media for that schedule and information. Funforce Pool had its soft opening after all the reconstruction that we have done on that one last week. We did discover the pool company needed to redo a portion of the pool flooring because it was too slick and causing a few people to slip, um, out, out there. Uh, they'll be adding gripping texture into the paint and repaint a portion of the pool to make sure it is completely safe. Um, and we're looking at about a week and a half delays and possibly opening right now. And because of the COVID-19 situation and the additional restrictions from the governor's office and the executive order, we are actually pushing the pool opening off still. We do not know actually what date we will be opening this summer, if we open up at all due to, uh, the current, as far as pandemic. The Wilder Park Splash Pad, though, is still underway for construction, um, and it should be done by the end of this week. Uh, we need to do some irrigation and grass work around this area before it's allowed to be opened. And because of the openness of that ability for social distancing at the splash pad, uh, that one should be able to be opened up and utilized by our communities. And then also, as you saw yesterday, we did have quite a bit of, 250 new confirmed cases of COVID-19 that were reported. Much of that was from St. Peter's Catholic Church, which was a walk-in testing site last week for a few days. Uh, although with that, I do want to state that they actually ran out of testing materials each day, so wasn't able to get fully utilized by everyone that wanted to come in for testing. So, uh, that is still a major concern. Still something we're kind of working on to make sure that we have test sites available for those who want to be able to go in, uh, take, take part in that. Um, I know our hospitals are, we are continuing discussion with our hospitals. We had a good conversation with them last week about their capacities and where they are and what assistance we may be able to provide for them um, in the coming weeks as they go through this pandemic situation. Any questions of council?
Yeah, Ed, this is Martin. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Now, uh, when we, when I sent the email yesterday, has, um, Northeast Texas Public Health been able to really drill down on the numbers from yesterday yet? Are they still looking into really the, the source and, uh, the systematic questions that we had?
So the question the mayor asked is related to, with the amount of... So the question the mayor asked is related to, with the amount of, as far as just kind of the drop in large amount of cases, confirmed cases that we gave yesterday, Net Health was able to ramp up back a couple months ago, or about maybe a month ago now, to have additional contact tracing staff available, kind of on a temporary basis for the rest of the year. But just because of the size of the number of cases coming in and the ability to make contact with each of those cases, to find out what their situation is, who they've been visiting with, what is their condition, we have been able to assist them with the police department and fire department, as we did with this began. We have staff that have been trained in contract tracing, and so we're going to be working with our police department and fire department for those people who've been trained in that to be able to assist Net Health for the contact tracing of all the cases that were provided to us yesterday. We get the names and addresses for each of those. As far as confirmed cases, that's protected, but it is one where we are able to then utilize that to determine as far as making, reaching out, trying to make that contact, and then finding out further about them, about who have they been in contact with, where have they been, are there other people that we need to notify, what was probably likely source of transmission, those type of questions. And so with this number, like I said, with 250 provided, that's, and then plus whatever the number comes today and so on, that overwhelms kind of the limited staff that Net Health had been able to build up very quickly. So that's the reason we have, as far as some of our police investigation staff and fire department, especially from our fire marshals as far as office, that are able to kind of be able to assist on that one. And I'm sure, well, George Roberts and I didn't talk about this one, I'm sure the county, which also had some staff that was trained in it, is also doing what they can to assist.
I have a question, and maybe I've read this over these last few weeks, but what percentage have we increased on daily tests, like percentage we were doing initially and with 250 yesterday? Obviously, we're doing a lot more testing right now. Is that tracked?
It is tracked. That's a really kind of, I guess, a George Roberts and Dr. Levine question with Net Health. And so they keep, as far as, they get the data. That was something we had asked about kind of early on, is making sure we're able to capture the data on number of tests provided here in Tyler. Now, the interesting piece of that is, it's the number of tests done in Tyler, but because of Tyler being the central hub, you're capturing, it's not, this number is cases for addresses in the Smith County, but you're having a lot more people tested from even from outside the area that are coming in for, to our hospital systems and to the walk-in testing. You don't have to necessarily be a resident of Smith County to utilize the walk-in testing that the state's able to provide here locally. But they capture that data, and I'll see what we can do to try to get some of that information for you.
I was just curious from the beginning, because I know there's a lot more availability and more testing labs here now.
Yes, ma'am. As you asked.
Now, this may be a question for Dr.
Ed, I do understand that from watching the numbers from the hospitals, they've doubled and tripled since the very beginning. And with that said, though, with the huge number that was recorded yesterday, I'm assuming there's a lot of asymptomatic people in that list that I'm sure are walking about the community and did not know they were sick, but they just wanted to be tested. Because if not, with that kind of numbers, I'm assuming that the hospital numbers would be even higher than the double or tripling. And so with that said, I know I'm out of town today, but the location I'm in, in Sarasota, I've noticed that the governor here put an order in to wear masks when you walk into a location. And really, everyone is wearing masks when they walk into any sort of building or restaurant. Of course, when you eat, you're not able to do that. And there's a lot of outdoor seating that people are not wearing masks. How is that being received in Tyler today or yesterday?
So for the governor's mask order, that has gone out, you know, just anecdotally is all the information I can provide on that one. Just you go to a location, you'll see maybe about, depending on the location, maybe about 50%, 75% of the people there are wearing masks. But that's just anecdotally upon what's been seen by just myself or others. I don't know if council members may have also just in their walks of life, from what they may see, on kind of, on the utilization and kind of amount that people are wearing it. Some places, like Brookshire's, are requiring to be able to even get into the, to their facilities and stores. And I know probably there's quite a few other as far as commercial businesses that are doing that as well in order to protect their employees, as well as protect their patrons and customers. And so it's, right now, though, there isn't as far as a gauge that we have on kind of exactly on what is the compliance rate to the governor's executive order.
Okay, well, thank you. I think, I think they said yesterday Florida doubled their population in the last week or so, so I think folks are being pretty serious and compliant around here, and so I was just wondering. So thank you, Ed.
You're welcome, sir. Councilman Keller?
Yes, you entered that one. I wanted to find out when our next testing is going to be set up. Do you have time for that?
I do not have a time that's been set. They haven't kind of alerted to that. I know that Chief Cobal was back there a minute ago, and I don't know if he's heard anything. So has there been a new testing, I guess, walk-in testing assigned to us? I can't remember.
Not yet. They're actually pushing the drive-up again because of the number.
Chief, would you mind coming to the mic?
Good morning. Mayor and council, Chief Cobal, Tyler Fire. They are pushing again more of the drive-up instead of the walk-up because of the exposure rates going up. So, and the labs are actually getting full. And so in order to allow testing for the really sick people, those that were just wanting to know, they're reducing that some with the ones who have some symptoms.
And Chief Cobal, do you have any idea about the testing that I asked Ed about?
Ed.
I know you've led this, and you've done a great job. I was on phone calls with you for weeks, and great job of leadership.
Thank you. City manager is right on point. In the state of Texas now, people come here from all over, and our people go there. They're testing in Palestine right now. I think Greg County has some walk-in testing going on. So our numbers may increase because some of our people went there, because after they test positive, it's reported back to the county where they live.
I see.
So those numbers, they're all intermixed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess with that, I know that there's a lag in confirming those that are still infected with the virus and those that have recovered, but we're having to do the math basically to find out current active cases in Smith County. Is it possible that we can make that request of Net Health to give us that number?
For.
Or is that too fluid of a?
It should actually be in the information. Like the data that was provided yesterday that from Net Health takes, then sends over to us, has 294 reported recovered cases in Smith County as of Tuesday at 2:00 PM, and active cases in Smith County at 799.
Okay.
And so they're, kind of their formula for that, just to kind of peek behind the curtain, is they're able to make contact with quite a few people. But for some people, they just take the date of the test, and if they can't ever make contact with that person, they won't return a call, or whatever it might be, then they just look to say, well, you know, two weeks after the confirmation piece, they will have, you know, the COVID-19 should, as far as, they should be past that COVID-19 period. So they'll fall off the list automatically that way as well and go into the confirmed category. So that way, you're not, you know, sitting around for, you know, the second or third person that ever caught COVID-19 or diagnosed or confirmed in Tyler, Texas, months ago still being, you know, listed as confirmed.
Right.
That they'll have been taken off and been on the recovered list just because of time.
Okay, thank you very much.
So one more question. So when we receive phone calls from people that work in various institutions and organizations that they're afraid, they're not doing the things that we know that should take place, like taking temperature, giving masks, or whatever, so what is our procedure? What should we do? Who should we contact to say this is, these are the complaints that we're getting, and how do we handle that?
We were getting a number of those, especially early on. And what we would often do is contact essentially the business owner or the institution kind of representative to say, this is, this is a concern that's being sent to us. And if it's being sent to us at the city, the next step usually for your employee, if they really are feeling threatened or are concerned, is going to be the media. And you don't want the media, you know, no offense to our media friends, but you don't want them to necessarily then to start to kind of run stories about your business saying how it's unsafe. So you need to take a look to see what is their concern and see how best you address it. We try not to make sure, we do what we can not to let them know who was the person who reported the claim.
Exactly.
So that there's no kind of whistleblower, that kind of actions that may be taken back on them. But we had a number of businesses as far as just really, I mean, just impressive institutions, and sometimes it was a communication issue between the employer and the employee. Sometimes it was things that they needed to do to just take better action on. And one of them was one that, you know, as we called them and left them a message, we saw the news story on one of the TV stations that, that very moment, reporting that they had a confirmed case and that they were going to shut down for a week in order to do clean. So it's, we, it's, it's what we do, we can to kind of help convey that message to them. So if you're getting them, if you want to contact them, or we don't mind contacting them as well to say, you're, like I said, your employees, people who are working for you, have concerns, and you may want to just do what you can to see what you can to address those.
Thank you.
You know, if there's been a positive thing about COVID, it's been really exciting for me to see the use of the top of the city's parks, all the people that are going out there. I never realized how important parks could be to a city, but it was a place for people to escape, and I drive through the park every day, and it's just so exciting to see all the people enjoying the parks and everything. That's one positive thing from COVID.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions, any discussion? Okay, thank you, city manager. Appreciate it. All right, now I'll entertain, is there any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by McKeller, a second by McGee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you. Thank you, council, for your service.
Good job, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.